I'm Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. I'd like to welcome everyone to this extraordinary council meeting. But quickly go over some general housekeeping. This meeting is being held in person at County Hall and has also been streamed live on the County Council's YouTube channel. The recording will also be available to view afterwards. A fire alarm test is not expected during the meeting, so if the fire alarm does sound, we must evacuate County Hall. And in the event of an emergency, please make your way to the nearest exit and meet at the muster point, which is located in the main car park. Worried about microphones when using your microphone? Please make sure it's switched on and speak towards it. This will tell the cameras to focus on you and ensure you can be heard in the live stream. When you've finished speaking, please push the button to turn off your microphone, as this will allow the system to pick up the next speaker. If you need to leave the meeting early, could you please also remove your card and leave it on your desk so that the AV system can see that you're no longer in the meeting? It would be very helpful of councillors if you could please indicate clearly if you wish to speak by raising your hand high. And please switch off your microphone again when you've finished. As you'll be aware, an extraordinary council meeting may only consider items that are included in the agenda, therefore the additional matters and motions will not be permitted. Before we start the meeting, can I remind members of the public that they're both welcome, but also this meeting is a meeting held in public, but it is not a public meeting where the attending audience participates? So you've reminded you've come along here to listen to this discussion carried out by the democratically elected councillors. And could I just warn you that if there is any disruption to the meeting, you'd be asked to leave and be accompanied from the building? Can I just check, we're now live, so we're now live on the YouTube. So for those who have just joined us, I'm councillor Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. Welcome to this extraordinary meeting of Norfolk County Council today, Thursday the 16th of October 2025. And we start our meeting, as always, with prayers. Reverend Cadman.
Almighty God, we come to you today asking for your guidance and inspiration as we gather for this council meeting. Let us hold in mind the continuing fragile situation in Gaza as we pray for a meaningful, long-term, peaceful settlement and guide all those with influence and authority there in the ways of peace, conciliation and compassion. And today, help us to engage in meaningful discussion, guide us in the ways of truth, tolerance, wisdom and integrity, and keep us ever mindful of the needs of the people and communities that we seek to serve. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. If we can now move on to those who have given their apologies to this meeting, so I'll ask Laine Tisdale, Committee Officer, to read out the apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We have apologies today from councillor Chris Dawson, councillor Jim Moriarty, councillor Lana Hempsey, councillor Tony White, councillor Andrew Proctor, councillor Serene Shibley-Sexton, councillor Maxine Webb, councillor Judy Oliver, councillor Rodri Oliver, councillor Martin Storey, councillor Steve Riley, councillor Emma Corlett, councillor Jane James, councillor Saul Penfold, councillor Karen Vincent, councillor Sheila Gurney, councillor William Nunn, councillor Daniel Elmer, councillor Claire Bowes, councillor Ed Maxfield, councillor Alison Birmingham, councillor Catherine Rowett, councillor Stephen Akerone and councillor David Sayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When I move on to Agenda Item Two, for members to declare any interests, do any councillors have any members' interests they wish to declare? None, thank you very much. So we move on to Agenda Item Three, which is Norfolk and Suffolk devolution. And I will ask Colin, the Leader of the Council, to move the report which is on the agenda in front of you.
Thank you, Chairman. Today marks a historic moment for Norfolk and Suffolk, and this is one that's been a long time in the making. Our colleagues in Suffolk have already agreed to take advantage of the devolution deal being offered, and now it's for us to decide whether Norfolk will do the same. If we accept, we will gain new powers and long-term funding to boost jobs, transport, housing and growth across both our counties. Under the government's devolution priority programme, Norfolk and Suffolk have been offered a transfer of powers and funding from Whitehall. That means decisions on jobs, skills, transport and housing will no longer be made in Westminster, but here in our region. We will receive an investment fund of £37.4 million each year for 30 years. That's more than £1.1 billion in total to spend on our local priorities. It's not as much as we would have liked, but it is a meaningful start, and it also comes with the opportunity to negotiate further powers and funding once we've completed the initial 18-month qualifying period. This deal gives us genuine local control. We will take on the adult education budget, giving us the ability to tailor skills and training to the needs of our people and businesses. We will gain strategic responsibility for housing, infrastructure, transport and economic development. The new combined authority with constituent members from both counties will be led by a directly elected mayor from May 2026. Together, those members will be responsible for local transport, skills and jobs, housing and development, economic growth and regeneration, environment and climate change, and from 2027 policing and fire and rescue. A directly elected mayor will ensure that the voice of Norfolk and Suffolk is heard clearly at the highest levels of government, and they will sit on the Committee of the Nations and Regions. This is a complex undertaking, and it must be set up carefully. Both county councils will have a role in shaping how it operates, and our district colleagues are already working with us to develop a strong pipeline of local projects that reflect community priorities. If we do not take this opportunity, Norfolk and Suffolk will fall behind. Our neighbours, Cambridgeshire, Lincolnshire and Essex, are moving forward, and there is no indication that any other areas will be offered devolution in this parliament. Rejecting this deal would put Norfolk to the back of the queue. Yes, there are elements we want to refine, but after my meeting with the minister yesterday, I'm confident there is genuine scope to shape devolution in a way that works for both our counties. Devolution is about making decisions closer to the people that they affect, and it gives us the means to improve lives by boosting our economy and creating new jobs, a higher-paid skills, strengthened transport links across not just our two counties but wider into our region, and deliver new homes that our communities need. We need to give our businesses the space to grow, and we have got support from the Chamber of Trade and our Business Board as well, who want to see devolution happen for Norfolk. They think this is a really good thing. So this council has always supported the principle of devolution, and we've been chasing this goal and this aim for many years. Today, we can take that final step in turning that commitment into a reality. And in doing so, we set Norfolk and Suffolk on a course for a stronger, more confident and more prosperous future.
Thank you, councillor. Do you have a second or a further motion, councillor Jamison? Do you wish to speak now or wish to reserve your right to?
Thank you. And I understand there is one amendment being proposed. Are there any other amendments before we do? Right. So what I propose is that we, this amendment will be proposed and seconded, and we will debate the amendment. It may or may not become part of the substantive motion, so we either return to the substantive motion as proposed or as amended, depending on the result of the vote at the end of the debate on the amendment. So this is debate on the amendment, not on the substantive motion. Councillor Morphy, you have three minutes to speak. Do you have a second or four? Right, thank you. And do you wish to speak at the end, reserve your right? Thank you. Councillor Morphy, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. The amendment is now on the screen. I think it's been circulated, and I think it's largely self-explanatory, and it is, I'm speaking now specifically about the amendment, substantive motion I'll speak about later. But to make devolution work, we need to ensure all those who have, to coin a phrase, skin in the game, are recognised and have a seat at the table as far as we can. Because of the legislation we're working with, the options are limited. What we know is that we will have a mayoral post in May and unitary councils in the next couple of years. Whatever the outcome of the elections and structural decisions about unitaries, whatever is set up now as the initial make-up of the combined authority, it's only interim pending the changes that are coming. We know the current top-tier authorities will be replaced by new authorities that include districts as well as county functions, so it makes sense to ensure that the district voice is heard on the interim combined county authority with voting rights. Yes, the top-tier authorities in Norfolk and Suffolk are conservative-controlled. Most of the districts are not. Most of the MPs in Norfolk are not conservative. We're in a state of flux where the government has given us the task of getting the new combined authority set up. As this is a long-term project and we are in the initial and interim stages, it makes sense to be as inclusive as possible. That means recognising the majority of the Conservative administration and decisions made by the Conservative Cabinet here, and indeed in Suffolk, and using the options available to us for appointments to the voting roles, substitute roles, and making sure the nominating bodies have voting rights and are used to ensure as wide an inclusivity as possible until after the elections to the new structures where the winners will have their mandate. The amendment asks the Cabinet to do that. It isn't a good start to a change like this, where one party takes decisions that exclude the voices of others, when we really do need to pull together for Norfolk to realise its potential. That's the intention here, and I'm confident those who use voices might otherwise be lost without the kind of proposals included in this amendment. We'll be keen to see it adopted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak to that? Councillor Cole.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would like to actually thank councillor Morphy for bringing this amendment today. The Lib Dem group will clearly be supporting this, as it's an important principle at stake here. Councillor Morphy is absolutely right in pointing out that the view that we've got a great range of political diversity, and this is across all councils in Norfolk, and therefore we don't simply want to just hear from one voice. I believe that there should be at least one of the two nominated numbers, and one of the substitute members should be from this side of the chamber. We have a good number of senior councillors sitting amongst us, and their experience, their knowledge on this new mayoral authority will be invaluable, and it would make a lot of sense. And I think we all agree that it's important that the new MCCA gets off on the right foot, that it makes up the reality and reflects the determination here to work closely together from the outset. So I support this extra recommendation as amended. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. And so far indicated, I have councillor Ring, councillor Kemp and councillor Kirk in that order. Councillor Ring first, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And thank you also, councillor Morphy, for putting this amendment. The reality of the situation is that every item on this amendment is implicit within the construction of the CCA in the first place, but it is a reflection on the trust and confidence that this chamber has in the leadership, that they would not follow these implicit directives. So it's a shame that it's felt that this amendment is needed to be put forward, but I wholeheartedly approve of the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp.
Yes, I support the amendment. The new mayoral authority would only have five members, one elected and four appointed. That in itself isn't democratic at all. In fact, the question is, why should you have two members appointed from another authority? Therefore, it's important to have inclusivity and to make sure that if two are going to be appointed from Norfolk, which they are, that at least one should reflect the non-ruling party. We need to have all voices here, all political backgrounds, all ideas, to make this work. As I say, I'm not in favour of an elected mayor, but if this is passed, it should be passed with the proviso that there should be at least one of our appointed people who is not from the ruling group.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kirk.
Thank you, Chair. The Reform group also backed this amendment from the Labour group wholeheartedly. It's on record that I don't like devolution or the elected mayor, whatever is going to happen to us, but we fully support this amendment, and I would urge other council members within this chamber to support it too, from all sides. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jamison, please.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I have to say, I think it's one of the more facile amendments I've seen in this chamber. I mean, if, I mean, Steve, can you just have a word with your Secretary of State? I mean, he's the, they're the people who wrote these rules. If you want to have them changed, if you have any influence with him, of course, which you may or may not, no doubt, you could have a word. I mean, this, the proposal went through without any ludicrous amendment like this in Suffolk, and indeed was supported by all the opposition members. And I just wonder, you know, whether Andy Burnham would be happy if he wasn't able to turn up at the council and suddenly he was represented by his Conservative opposition, or perhaps you're suggesting Kemi Badenoch or to represent Starmer at PMQs. It's just, it's an absurdity, and I think we need to move on.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? In that case, oh, sorry. Councillor Neil.
I was just reflecting on that last speech. It just seems to me as if it's indicating what I've always suspected, that you want to grab all the power, and you're not really willing to devolve the power.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Otherwise, return to councillor Jones to sum up her second amendment, sorry.
Thank you. I have nothing to add.
We go to councillor Mason Billig as proposer of the substantive motion to reply to the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. No, I don't, I can't accept this amendment. Opposition members on the board doesn't happen anywhere else. Councillor Jamison has explained why that happens. You could put a constituent member in a very difficult position if you had them from different parties. If there's, in this chamber, for example, they are voting for in one direction, and then on the MCCA, they're faced with a complete about-face. And the place for opposition is scrutiny. A mayoral-county combined authority will have a proper scrutiny function, and that is where the opposition members' voices will be heard, very loudly, I hope. That's the, that's the whole point. We are the current administration here, and we do have an overwhelming majority. I think sometimes the opposition members forget that. Now, we've got elections in May next year, so if the administration changes, the constituent members will change as well, and that's called democracy, guys. The Labour government have set up the make-up of the MCCA. They've not mandated that district colleagues should automatically get voting rights or anything along those lines. They have set up this authority, and when we get local government reorganisation and we have unitaries, that will all change again. So we can't dictate what another authority should do, and I think some of this amendment is trying to push the MCCA down a particular path. It's not for us to say that. I mean, would you, can you imagine the horror of Norwich City Council if we tried to tell them who they should give votes and control to? It wouldn't be, it would just wouldn't be acceptable for us to interfere in another authority, and I don't think this amendment is acceptable on that basis, so I can't possibly accept it. Sorry.
Right, thank you. So the amendment has not been accepted. It's been duly proposed, debated and seconded and debated, so we move to the vote on the amendment. Thank you. I understand that everyone has been able to vote, so the result is four the amendment, 20, no abstentions and against 38, so the amendment is lost. So we'll now return to the vote on the substantive motion, which is unaltered. We'll just wait till the name is passed on the... Thank you very much. So we'll return to the debate on the substantive motion. Group leaders will have five minutes to speak each, and other members three. And councillor Watkins, you're first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Today marks a defining moment for local government in Norfolk. When the curtain was brought down on the in-principle county deal just over a year ago, I expressed the hope that far from being the beginning, the end for devolution, it was instead just the end of the beginning. It was always likely that with the election of a new government, that the process would be overtaken by events, and so it has proved. We are now potentially facing the most radical overhaul of local government in half a century, but nothing should be taken for granted. The decision we reached today must reflect what is best for Norfolk moving forward, and it is important that we take the public with us on this new journey. Mayoral politics may be the new kid on the block in local government, and its reach and influence is likely to deepen in the coming years. But the reality is that it is nowhere near the top of most voters' priorities. They have little concept of what this change will mean for them, what benefits it will bring, and how they might hold the newly-elected mayor to account for their decisions. The public is far from convinced, and there is no doubt that we have a big selling job in front of us, and we ignore that at our peril. Along with others, I am also concerned about the precise arrangements that are being made for the scrutiny of the mayoral-county combined authority. It is essential that this works effectively and that the experience and knowledge of its members is used to the best possible effect. I know that last Friday's Strategic and Corporate Select Committee raised the significant implications that will arise from the transfer of the Norfolk and Fire Rescue Service and Police and Crime Commissioner roles to the mayor. And there are clearly a number of fairly complex issues that we need to deal with over time, but hopefully that transition can be addressed satisfactorily. However, I look ahead to this brave new world with anticipation, and ideally want devolution to succeed. In my long political career, I have never wavered from the belief that devolving power closer to the people, empowering them to do what is best for their local communities, is indeed the best form of governance, and to see it finally happen would be the fulfilment of a dream. of a dream. No deal is perfect, but we can't keep saying no. We have to start from somewhere. This devolution is a crucial first step upon which we can build further and build better. The creation of the 37.5 million investment fund for each of the next 30 years will be a powerful mechanism for driving both local and regional growth across the two counties. The potential is enormous. Other mayoral areas have attracted further sources of funding, which have added to the levels of investment that can be attracted, and we can do the same here. However, we have to strike the right balance. Norwich and Ipswich might be the main drivers of the sub-regional economies, but there has to be fairness and we must ensure that there are not areas that get left behind. A project pipeline has been carefully put together, and so it is incumbent on the new MCCA to use its newly-created powers wisely and that it works hand-in-hand with all component district councils to make certain that this happens. Indeed, if the new mayoral authority becomes properly established in the first 18 months of its existence, then there will be the opportunity to see more power and responsibilities devolved in Norfolk and Suffolk, as the leader has alluded to. And that can only be a good thing in terms of strengthening our sense of place. And with the newly-elected mayor having a seat at the table of the Committee of Nations and Regions, the area will have a much stronger voice with government. Mister Chairman, Council, we know that over the years, there have been many false storms for devolution across Norfolk. High hopes have often ended in disappointment, and many of us still bear the scars of battles fought and lost. I hope that this time, it can be different, because I generally worry about Norfolk being left behind. It's time to embrace change, to open a new chapter-
Councillor could use to sum up please.
...and for us to set aside our differences and work together for the common good. The road ahead of us is likely to be bumpy and uncertain, but get it right and devolution can help unlock the economic potential of Norfolk and Suffolk and help secure a more prosperous future for everyone. The time has come. Thank you Mister Chairman.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Morphy.
Thank you Chair. And finally, after what seems to be an eternity, we have a devolution scheme worthy of the name. It holds out the prospects of long-term change so Norfolk can build on the potential we know we have, develop our reputation building on what we do well already, and claiming our rightful position at the top table with other parts of the country. Although it isn't perfect, this devolution arrangement builds on the previous devolution deal. Much of it is substantially the same. The big difference is the governance, the fact the investment pots are built into government budgets, whereas before they weren't. This is a deal across the whole of government and not just what used to be the levelling up department and their MHCLG. As it was in the last iteration, the previous deal was dependent more on government whims. This one is grounded in law, will have a legal framework around it. It can and will change over time as circumstances evolve, but it's on much firmer ground which to build the future with confidence and clarity. This can only be the start and of course, there are still many questions outstanding. Inevitably, some will only refer to the initial quantum of the investment pot, and of course, we want more. This pot was always about leverage, attracting new funds, strategic interventions for long-term added value and resilience, rather than quick fixes or the short term. Equally inevitably, we keep hearing political whatabouts. What about if this happens or they get elected? Interesting discussions are down the pub, but responsible politicians have to look beyond their short-term interests, and this is not a change for the short term. This is something we've never experienced before and taken with LGR, local government reorganisation, I doubt we will ever see again in the lifetimes of many of us here today. There has been too much short-term thinking for too long, thinking that had led to decades of underfunding and under-investment, underappreciation of what we have to offer our communities and our county and our country indeed. Deciding to proceed today won't bring instantaneous change, but it will forever change how we go about many key strategic issues for Norfolk and neighbouring Suffolk. That is to be unreservedly welcomed. But that can't be an end to it. Our residents watch us shuffling the deck chairs and don't see the frustration we've experienced over the decades as councils and businesses in Norfolk try to get the attention of decision-makers in government. We've not done a sufficient job in explaining what this can mean, jobs, homes, prosperity, resilience. Although in the minds of ordinary people going about their day-to-day lives, that's a kind of meaningless list. I made the point earlier and reinforce it now, but we need to acknowledge that across all parties, there will be a slew of projects for the investment pipeline that we will all sign up to and doubtless we will be in our election manifestos. But why can't we come together now for those no-brainers to inspire and engage our residents to be a positive part of this devolution project? What better way to broaden the inspiration to would-be investors than to show them our communities are behind us? I don't have time to go through all of the examples that are potentially available. Let me choose public transport. Buses that meet trains arrive at workplaces when they're turning out and not minutes too late. More public transport covering the county and able to buy a ticket in Felix though, and not having to buy another one when you finish your journey in King's Lynn and beyond. There are things that we can do that our existing structures have never enabled us to do, but we can do under a devolved authority with a new mayor. That's the kind of stuff that will make a difference to the cultural, economic, health, education, wellbeing of our communities, and we can do that. We should be able to find at least a handful of those opportunities that we can coalesce around with our political differences to try and show how this is going to make a difference so that we do get people more engaged and when we get to the election of the mayor, they want to take part. It's been a long journey and I've been critical along the way, though never questioning the principle. My personal thanks, while I've got the opportunity, to all those who've toiled to get us here despite our differences along the way. We finally have a devolution scheme worth supporting, so now let's make sure we make the best of it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Price.
Thank you Chair. From a Green perspective, the principle of devolving power from Westminster to the people of Norfolk and Suffolk is welcome. Decisions about our transport, housing and skills should be made closer to the communities they affect. Real devolution could mean more democratic control and better outcomes for our residents. However, the report before us shows that this so-called devolution deal risks creating a new layer of remote governance, not greater local accountability. Under the proposals, Norfolk will have just two representatives on the new combined authority. Two councillors representing a county of nearly a million people. They will sit alongside two from Suffolk and a mayor elected across both counties. Those two councillors will hold significant responsibility, yet they will not be directly accountable to this full council or to the public in any meaningful way. The draft regulations state that constituent councils shall appoint two members to the authority, but there is no mechanism for regular scrutiny by the wider county council, no requirement for reports back to full council, no power for this council to recall or overall decisions made on our behalf. That creates a democratic gap the size of the A47. We must also ask, what happens to the relevance of Norfolk County Council once a combined authority with a powerful mayor exists? Large parts of our transport, housing and economic planning functions will transfer upwards, while the council retains the blame if things go wrong. That's not real localism, it's outsourcing responsibility without authority. The report notes that the mayor will have control over the local transport plan and key route network. That risks cutting across the longstanding infrastructure plans Norfolk has developed carefully with its districts and communities. How will a politically-elected mayor, possibly with different priorities or even from a different party, respect the local evidence base we've built over decades? And what about conflicts between Norfolk and Suffolk? Each county has different needs and long-seated plans that often contradict. The report itself acknowledges that the combined authority will need to manage competing priorities between the constituent areas. That's polite wording for real political friction. Finally, we must be honest about funding. Devolution only works if powers are properly funded. The report makes clear that costs of the authority will be met by constituent councils unless otherwise agreed. History tells us what that means. Underfunded devolved powers and extra burdens on local taxpayers. It looks less like a bold new start and more like a cost-saving exercise by central government, passing down responsibility without the money to match. If funding falls short, it will mean poorer services, not better ones, for the residents of Norfolk and yes, also for our neighbours in Suffolk. So while Greens support the principle of genuine devolution, we cannot support a structure that weakens democratic accountability, risks financial exposure and places more power in fewer hands. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ring please.
Thank you Chair. The opportunity to bring decision-making closer to communities we serve is not just a policy shift, it is a democratic necessity. Norfolk and Suffolk deserves the chance to shape their own futures, to unlock funding and to design solutions that fit our local realities. The combined county authority gives us a vehicle to do that, to join up transport, skills, housing and economic development under a single coherent vision. So yes, I support the destination, but I am increasingly troubled by the route we are taking to get there. Because tone matters, leadership matters, and the way we treat one another in public life matter most of all. The language from this council's leadership towards our district colleagues is not the language of partnership. It is dismissive, it is very patronising, and it reflects an attitude that sees others as lesser, an attitude that has no place in leadership of this great county. True leadership, as Nelson Mandela once reminded us, is not about commanding from the front, it is about leading from behind and putting others first. It is about humility, the quiet strength that listens, that builds bridges, that brings people with you rather than pushing them aside. What we are seeing instead is leadership by assertion, leadership that mistakes confidence for wisdom, leadership that measures success by control, not collaboration. District councils are not junior partners in this process, they are democratically-elected bodies with deep roots in their communities. They understand the local fabric and ways that county-level governance cannot. To treat them as peripheral or worse, expendable, is not only disrespectful, it is profoundly short-sighted. And when we hear senior figures talking as if district staff are the main waste to be eliminated through local government or reorganisation, we should pause and reflect on what that says about our values. Those staff are not waste, they are living fabric of local democracy. They are the ones who deliver, the housing offices, the planners, the community engagement teams, the people who keep our towns and villages running. They are the ones who know the residents by name and the realities and realities behind every postcode. Churchill said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." Our district staff give their communities everything, often under immense pressure to reduce them to a line on a spreadsheet or a cost to be trimmed is an insult to the public service. If there is waste in the system, it's not among the people that are doing the work, it is in the bureaucracy, the silos that come from poor leadership and a known willingness to share power. The truth is, confident leaders welcome scrutiny. They value dissent, they know that good ideas are forged in discussion not imposed by decree. Arrogant leaders by contrast silence criticism and call it loyalty. They make domination for strength, they mistake domination for strength, and history has not been kind to that model of leadership. We should all now be agnostic about our hopes for what LGR will bring. None of us yet knows its final shape. As Lincoln said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand", and if we allow this process to become a power struggle rather than a partnership, we will have divided that house before it has even started. We talk about empowering local voices, yet the councils closest to those voices are being sidelined. We talk about transparency, yet the statutory instrument, the foundation of this new authority, is being withheld from public view until it is laid before Parliament. We talk about inclusive government, yet the tone from this leadership suggests a closed circle of people who already think they know the best. And let us remember this, the decisions about who will sit on the new CCA will not be made by the current leadership. A new mayor, a new county council will be elected in May, seven months from now. The political landscape will shift, the people will choose. They will remember their representatives being ignored by this leadership, they will remember their own voices being silenced, and they will remember that this leadership chose to bypass democracy itself, hiding behind a constitution that said it could. So why this presumption of control? Why this arrogance, speaking as though the outcome was already ours to decide? The great leaders of history, Mandela, Churchill, Lincoln, Atlee, and yes, even locals, shared one trait above all others, dignity. They understood that leadership is not about claiming power but about earning trust. Devolution is not about hoarding power at the county level, it is about distributing it, it is about listening, not dictating, partnership, not hierarchy. So yes, let us support this statutory instrument, but let us do so with humility. Let us listen to the districts, the parishes, the communities, the people who took time to respond to the consultation with genuine doubts and questions. Because make no mistake, this new authority-
Councillor, you're out of time, could you sum up please?
...will only succeed if it's built on trust. If we undermine that trust now, we will reap division later. Because as history teaches us, arrogance builds empires that crumble, but humility builds partnerships that endure.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Kemp please.
Thank you Chair. Devolution I am in favour of, but this is not devolution. It's certainly not democracy. 65% of the public in Norfolk and Suffolk voted in the consultation against having elected mayor, but the government said the statutory tests are going to be met and you're going to have one. That's not democracy at all. It's been said that this brings powers closer, but in actual fact, it takes them away. Nothing is more important in Norfolk than control over our transport and our transport infrastructure. And yet, the powers would go to the elected mayor, powers over bus franchising, concessionary fares, partnerships with bus companies and control over our local transport plan. This is not democratic. We need to revise this or refuse it. Secondly, powers over our local housing. These should be made locally, as locally as possible, as close to communities as possible, but what in actual fact will happen is, the elected mayor will have powers of compulsory purchase, will have powers to bypass the planning process and create mayoral development orders, will have the powers to set up a mayoral development corporation. These are huge powers which will affect our communities. This is about a loss of control, it's about a democratic deficit. Then there's the powers of taxation. The elected mayor will be able to put a preset on the council tax, and how much is that going to be? The elected mayor will have powers to tax, put a tax on community infrastructure, whereas now the levy goes to the borough councils, you can decide locally where it should go, on the local priorities. In this case, it will go up to the elected mayor and it could take away money from what is needed locally. The elected mayor is going to be largely unaccountable once they're elected, because whereas now a leader of a council could be removed by their own party or by the council, there is no obvious mechanism for an elected mayor to be asked to leave if he or she does not align with the priorities of the areas that they're chosen to represent. This is a recipe for an elected dictatorship. Norfolk and Suffolk just don't need this. They've said no and they're not happy with it. In 2016, this chamber rejected the idea of a mayor for Norfolk, the public didn't want it, and we realised having read the statutory instrument, we would have to bankroll the new authority and we would lose powers as a transport passenger authority, and yet, same thing is happening now. We've not even seen the statutory instrument. How democratic is that? It isn't, is it? I would urge everybody to think very, very hard about the way they vote today, because this is going to have influence over Norfolk for generations to come. It is possible that the interests and needs of Norfolk will be subsumed in those of Suffolk, or the other way round. But we are here, we are elected to represent Norfolk and finally, the Fire Rescue Service. Now, again, in 2016, a campaign was run to keep the Fire Rescue Service with the county council and not have it taken off. council and not have it taken off and be controlled by the police commissioner. And this campaign was widely supported in West Norfolk and generally, and we won, we kept the fire rescue service, which is something which is very special to Norfolk, because Norfolk has huge needs to do with flood risk and we have the flood rescue service as well, which is not statutory. And yet, the elected mayor would, will have powers to take over the fire rescue service in addition to the powers of the police commissioner and can appoint up to seven commissioners, who as far as I can see could be completely unelected. This is not a democratic route to go down, it doesn't matter what happens elsewhere, we are elected to represent Norfolk council and therefore I recommend that we do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Kirk, please.
Thank you, Chair. This isn't democracy, it never will be democracy. When the front bench are telling us what we're going to have without having proper discussion through the last 12 months, I find it difficult to believe it is actually democracy. I think the front bench also owe our district council staff an apology for the use of language over the last few months, it's been way out of order. Our district and borough staff are very upset, they don't know what they're going to do, what's going to happen. They've been treated rather like cattle in a cattle market, to be perfectly honest with you. I do believe that the lack of democracy started last year when you accepted the government and you cancelled the elections, do you remember that? I do. I resigned and I came back to haunt you all. I do honestly, honestly think we should, hopefully the opposition and some of the leading, the Conservatives ought to get together and abstain against this, because it's totally, totally out of order. I wouldn't think many of the front bench actually know where Marshland North is, so I very much doubt whether a elected mayor will ever come to Marshland North.
Sorry, councillor, sorry councillor.
Point of order, I know where Marshland North is and I can actually name the residents.
Can we allow the debate to continue and you'll have your chance to respond?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I will continue. Marshland North, actually, many of, we'll even widen it out, many of Norfolk County council councillors have perhaps never been to our neck of the woods. An elected mayor and its regime will not improve the situation, we will be under one elected mayor covering both Norfolk and Suffolk. I would look forward to welcoming the elected mayor once every couple of months into Marshland North and come and see us, see what we get up to out there. But in the meantime, the problems are going to mount up, it's going to cost taxpayers a lot of money, the problems will increase, we've seen it all before. And I'm, I am totally, I join with Alexander Kemp there that are totally against the situation we're now facing, but by the looks of it, we're going to have to put up and shut up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor, and I open the debate up. Members who will have three minutes to speak to this substantive motion. I have so far councillors Roper, councillor Borat, councillor Long and councillor Adams, and councillor, sorry councillor Neil and councillor Adams. Councillor Roper, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Let's be frank councillors, this isn't a vote today between this deal and some imaginary perfect deal which is going to make everybody happy. This is a prospect of deal or no deal today for Norfolk. It's a choice between whether we want the first phase of devolution to go ahead or whether we want Norfolk to be set back in the queue probably for at least another decade, whilst other areas get their deals, get their second deals and then progress. That's the choice we've got today councillors. So today we have to make this decision, tomorrow the work will begin on setting the structures and getting the architecture right for that deal to be able to deliver. And I welcome the words on scrutiny and the importance of scrutiny and accountability as we move into these next stages, particularly around the pipeline of projects and making sure that they are going to deliver what is the main selling point of devolution. So we've got to get proper accountability in place, we've got to get the structures right. Beyond that, there is a series of political choices for whoever comes into office, whoever the mayor is, whoever is leading the new unitary council or councils. And it will be up to them to decide whether or not it will cost residents more, that's going to be their political choice. Whether or not these projects are going to be delivered on time and are going to deliver for the people of Norfolk, that's going to be their choice, those are the political choices of the future. What we've got to do today is set the conditions and the structures right so that there is the best possible chance of this deal delivering for Norfolk, and I would urge everybody to support it.
Thank you councillor, councillor Borat.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to start by observing that there has been a convention for many years that members are not whipped on matters of constitutional change. With major constitutional change, you would hope that there would be a referendum of the residents who would be exposed to this. And has there been any meaningful engagement or a referendum here in Norfolk? No, there has not. I wander around this building, listening to people in this echo chamber explaining that the money makes a difference and that it's a good thing, and then they talk to other people who say back to them what they've just said. But does this imaginary castle in the air survive contact with the residents of Norfolk? No, it does not. Certainly in my area, support for a mayor for Norfolk and Suffolk is at around 20% with about 80% of residents saying they do not want this. Now, we are not delegates from the county council to go out and tell our residents what to think, we are their representatives here. It is for us to act as advocates for their views to shape the way that local democracy works. There are issue with the money, it's not guaranteed for 30 years, I think it's highly unlikely that it would survive contact with a new government, and it might not even survive contact with a new leader of the existing government, however long he manages to last. There are issues with democracy, there are no powers that are coming down, everything's going up to the mayor, there are things currently done by district and by this council which members control and that the public hold us to account for their delivery at parish and town councils, which we will say in future, no, I'm afraid that's for the mayor, I have no say over that. The mayor will be elected by a constituency of one and a half million people. So how much is an individual parish gained, how much weight are they going to have if they're dealing directly with the mayor, with nobody to advocate for their, on their behalf in between? The new chief executive of the combined authority, apparently I hear from the meetings, is going to be paid £350,000 equivalent, and that the chief financial officer is going to be paid £150,000, that's half a million pounds for two people who we don't currently need. And just in case somebody thinks on this, in this side, that I'm an outlier, the Conservative Party at Westminster has voted against the legislation for the establishment of compulsory mayors. So I'm not somebody...
Could you sum up please councillor?
Okay, I'll go straight to my summing up. To sum up, this proposed mayor for Norfolk and Suffolk will cost our residents more and they will have less of a say, it's a bad thing.
Thank you councillor, councillor Long, please.
Yeah, follow that, eh? Devolution, it comes around time after time, the longer you stay in local government, the more times devolution appears. And depending on who's in charge at, in Whitehall and number 10, you get a variance of opinion from people around any council chamber, depending on what political colour allegiance they happen to have on any given subject matter. Suddenly deals that were useless before are fantastic now, even though they equate to any 20 pence difference each person in the county. And actually, this is the real crux of it, government dangles money and it's not real devolution. Devolution is, you know, look for a dictionary definition, it's the moving the power down. Yet part of what's being proposed, not by our choice, by the rules that the government are laying down, are sending powers up, and councillor Kemp made reference to what might happen to our Norfolk Fire and Rescue Service. I also think what will happen with the police under a combined Norfolk and Suffolk mayor. The problem is this, in 2016, when I was just a new leader of a district council, the district council in West Norfolk had a vote at that point, because it was a county combined authority under slightly different legislation and the districts had a say. Two of the districts said they wouldn't play straight away, the first district to have a vote on it was West Norfolk, and people within the chamber were told there's better to come, there's better to come, we don't need a directly elected mayor, you'll get this, but just on a county council leader powers. And guess what, 2016, that's nine years ago, we could have had a combined authority, that deal, back then, just for Norfolk, was £20 million a year, it was £100 million for investment in housing. We've not got any of those sort of commitments now, but if we don't do a deal, we'll never do a deal. And this may be that something good will come down the pipeline, but at what price? This is a real difficult call, it's a shame that this chamber isn't making the decision, because the council should be supreme in this matter, our constitution means that it's a cabinet decision, and I think cabinet will have a difficult decision to make and be held accountable for. I personally will support the deal, because I think the investment is so desperately needed. Is it perfect? It's far from it, it's another government shambles.
Councillor, could you sum up? That saves that. So far, so far I have councillors Neil, Adams, Eagle, Bick and Thomas indicated they wish to speak. If anyone else wished to speak, put their hand up, otherwise councillor Neil, please.
Thank you, Chair. I never thought I would say this, I agree with councillor Borat. I support the right type of devolution where power is actually moved down more to our citizens. The proposal before us is supposed to devolve power closer to us, but it has the reverse effect in the Norfolk and Suffolk wide mayor. And the few junior representatives from the FUDs will be making all the decisions, some of which we already have been making at district and county levels. The government has said they would like the mayoral elections to be by proportional representational voting, probably similar to the current police and crime commissioner. Great, the position backed by the Labour Party membership for all elections, but strangely not by Mr Starmer. However, in the next breath, the government then said it was not possible to arrange that so quickly for May's mayoral elections. I'd like to remind Mrs Starmer, it only took a year to build the 102-storey Empire State Building in the 1930-31, yet you have had more than a year to sort out this simple legislation for mayoral elections. If the current government can't work at such speed, I'd like the process to be slowed down by a few months or a year so the paperwork can catch up with the ambition. For this reason, I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you councillor, councillor Adams, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So I again wanted to highlight the public concerns over costs as per the consultation response and representation, particularly over such a large geography. And this person, this new strategic mayor will of course have an immense challenge in terms of being visible and accessible in that space. So I still share those concerns, we're talking about another precept, another layer of local government, and residents need to see tangible change in difference as a result of that, because we are going from a three-tier system to a three-tier system where parish councils exist. But do accept that there will be tangible benefits for Norfolk. The issues around access and costs of public transport, particularly for young people, are affecting life choices and decisions, and I feel that's certainly the area where the strategic authority could make the biggest difference. So pragmatically but somewhat reluctantly, I will be supporting this, but I will say that cabinet members could talk me out of that yet. Like councillor Borat, I still support a referendum on these changes and the introduction of the unitary councillors at unitary councils, but residents now need to stand up and say they want that to occur. So pragmatic support for this, just to sum up, but hopefully the leader or the deputy leader of the council won't talk me out of that in the next few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Eagle, please.
Thank you. I would just like to highlight to council a press release from the government on the 29th of September, this was them announcing their creative industries fund. They decided that six mayoral regions would receive £25 million each, for them to decide where it was needed on their creative industries, whether it's gaming, film, everywhere else. They also announced at the same time that 12 non-mayoral regions will receive £25 million each. If we'd have been one of those, who knows how much more we could have been spending and pushing Norwich, already one of the main centres, and when I speak to those people, how they have changed that whole dynamics of that part of Norwich, but also going out to those rural areas. We've got Watten, they're trying to create a digital media centre to do the same as Norwich in their rural area. The county council has funded it and it is supported by the district council as well, but we need that money. If we'd have been a mayoral authority, that could become a reality. And that is a shame, but that is the fact of life, of where central government money will go to those mayors. And I'd much rather have the opportunity, having a mayor, taking that money and putting it down to it. But I would agree, if you go and ask people, do you want a mayor, they will say no. But if you then go and ask them, do you want £37.4 million per annum coming into your county or your Norfolk and Suffolk, they will say yes. Then you say, well, what am I supposed to do then? Which one? The overwhelming majority of the people I have spoken to have then said, we've got to follow the money and I'll suck up the mayor, and I've used their wording, not mine on that point. And that does include people in the Marshland North area, and I will remind councillor Kirk, I did extend an invite, because I appreciate it's out in the west, no one comes there, but I'll come and visit and meet his people, that was in 2023, I'm still waiting for his invite to come out there and visit, but I have done it myself anyway. Thank you councillor Kirk and thank you council.
Thank you councillor, councillor Bick, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Bilig said that this is an historic day, well indeed it is, it's 168 days since the county council elections should have taken place. At the last council meeting, councillor Bilig said that the 81 councillors who have no mandate were here legally. Well, let's thank heavens for small mercies, eh? But behind the scenes, there's also guidance being given on what happens in the event that the county council elections are cancelled again. So given the lack of trust in councillor Bilig and this administration, can we take her assurance that there will be county council elections next year, she's just said it, and can we treat that as an honest, firm, guaranteed commitment? Or is that likely to change? In the, the English, the so inaptly named English devolution and community opinion on this were on the government website, and yet neither councillor Bilig nor any of her colleagues made any reference to that, and even now it's being misrepresented in this report before council... And even now, it's being misrepresented in this report before council. Over half the public are against. No, it's more like 65, 70%, or in some cases, 80%. What's clear is that you are just intent on ignoring the voters, ignoring the public and just doing things the way you want to do them. It's unacceptable. It's amoral, if not immoral. The last thing I'd like to say on this, Mr Chairman, is if this combined authority is set up in February or March, who knows? And if the mayoral election takes place in May, who knows? In that period in between, this Tory administration needs to be extremely careful about who they appoint into officer positions, who they appoint onto the CTA committee and how money is spent. Because I can assure you that we will be watching this very closely, if necessary, with the aid of preeminent legal advice. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Thomas, please.
Can you turn your microphone off, councillor Bick? I've been a councillor in this chamber since 2009. And I'm really sad that I have sat here this morning and heard a debate about devolution turn into personal attacks on the leadership of this council. Whether councillor Bick or councillor Ring like it, councillor Mason Bilig is the leader of this council. There are some of us in this chamber who've held similar positions. I was deputy leader, along with councillor Roper, deputy leader before me. It's not an easy job. You cannot please everybody all of the time. But we're here to make a decision about whether we say yes or no to devolution. And actually, I totally agreed with what councillor Roper said. We have to be pragmatic. Is this right for Norfolk? Is it perfect? Do people want an elected mayor? Maybe they don't. But do we want the scenario that councillor Eagle has alluded to? That areas with a directly elected mayor get a larger proportion of government funding? Not because they need it, not because they're the exemplar in the area that councillor Eagle quoted, but because they're a mayoral authority. So Norfolk has lost out on that funding. We've got to share that £8 million across a number of authorities because we don't have a mayor. I give the example, when I'm thinking and trying to explain to my parishes about what devolution means, I've used the Long Stratton bypass as an example. We have been almost there on a number of occasions. And each time, something has happened in central government that has meant that we no longer had the funding. We literally got that scheme through just before the general election. And I suspect we wouldn't have done had it been after that. And I suppose what I'm saying is that actually, to devolve transport funding in particular to the local authority, to Norfolk and Suffolk as a whole, we would have got our bypass, my residents would have got their bypass, much sooner because it sat on the Department for Transport's desk for many, many months, waiting for the Treasury to agree to fund something that had been fought for over 100 years. So I think that's my example to my residents and that's my example to the chamber. Yes, it's not perfect. Maybe we wouldn't choose it if we actually were starting from scratch. But actually, if additional funding comes to Norfolk because we have a mayor and that allows us to do things in our communities that have a meaningful change for our residents, then I'm absolutely 100% behind it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stone, please.
Thank you, Chairman. It's, as councillor Mason Bilig said, this is a momentous occasion today. We have the opportunity today to recommend to Cabinet that they accept this proposal for devolution. I totally support the proposal. I have been a fan, if you like, of government reform, local government reform and the establishment of a mayoral authority for many, many years, going back. I've been a councillor for nearly 30 years, not always on the county council, but certainly in districts. We have to support this devolution bill, not because we want to particularly do it, not because we think it's the best deal going. It's because of the people of this county and Suffolk, because we'll be working together. We're going to give them the best opportunity that they've ever had, realistic opportunity, because we've now got a chance of getting it, which we didn't in the past. The best deal that the residents of Norfolk have got on the table and is virtually a guarantee benefit to every single person in this county. How many years have we sat here begging government for a bit of a pittance to do this project or that project and getting nowhere? If you want to go back to that kind of situation, don't support devolution. If you want to move forward, support devolution. If it's explained properly, as councillor Fabian Eagle said, if it's explained to the people, one way or another, it's, yeah, they don't want a mayor, but they don't realise what a mayor means. It will give them the benefits that go with it. And it will also give them representation. We're not going to take away their democracy. There'll still be councillors representing them. There will still be the opportunity to de-select a mayor and not vote him in in the future. So we've got to take this opportunity because it's the only opportunity we've got of moving forward with the funding that goes with it. You've only got to look at all the devolved areas, Manchester, Liverpool, Middlesbrough, Birmingham, all the massive developments taking place. That's what we potentially have for Norfolk and Suffolk. And we mustn't waste that opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dock, please.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to speak, but because there's been a number of valid contributions, I wanted to make certain something that was said earlier didn't get missed. And learning from councillor Neil, I think I'm going to reach out across the chamber and thank councillor Roper for his contribution today. I think, given some of the political commentary, it was very measured around the big issue facing us, particularly around the deal or no deal comment. We need to remember that in every game, you need to know the rules of the game. We didn't set the rules of this, nor are we the ultimate decision maker. That is central government. Councillor Long has mentioned that central government is not overtly interested in Norfolk. It has its priorities in urban areas across the UK. And it has, according to the national press, very tight budgets and pressures on those budgets. A no today, from a pragmatic point of view, taking on what councillor Adams has said, gives them an excuse to step back from Norfolk. Do we want to give them that encouragement? Now, speaking as a portfolio holder at this council and also previously at a borough council, I felt a little bit lectured today around the attitude towards council staff, around how we treat borough officers. However, I've heard nothing in this chamber by the two people that raised that of their concern and support for staff of this council, the people that run our fire service and go into danger on our behalf, the people that run adults and children services, often where the best choice is the least worst choice and that they haven't got funding and support behind them. The decision around LGR affects all council staff. And I for one are absolutely in their corner. But what it would suggest, a no decision today on this creates even more uncertainty for those staff. Because a yes is that there is a framework and a plan and a moving forwards. A no is, where do we go next? Where do we go next, five, 10, 15 years' time, when funding is away from them and away from Norfolk? So going back to councillor Adams' worthy contribution, from a pragmatic point of view, I will be supporting Cabinet in taking this forward today on that balance. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Shirrs, please.
I just want to thank everybody on this side of the room, actually, for their contributions today. It's been really, really worth our time, everybody thinks. And for me, when I go back to residents and they ask me how my meeting was today, I'll be able to really talk about how, from the floor, we're all pretty united in where we are and where the voices of our residents should be in that. The difficulty that I face is like councillor Adams. When I came in here, I was pretty open to this, knowing that we have to do something. But when I sit and I listen to the people who sit to my left, it really does switch me off as much as it switches off my residents. And the attitudes and the way that we're spoken to and the way that we're devalued on behalf of our communities is really, really troubling. And you can shake your head and you can frown. And I will tell my residents that when I put my views across, that was the reception that I received. And for me, that is the very basis of why local people are losing faith in what democracy is. Because we sit here and we're jeered and we're frowned at and heads are shaken, and that is really upsetting. So when I'm sat here and told, this is the best we're getting, this is the only option, this is what we're going to do, I've got no faith that my residents are really valued in this at all. And that is the biggest trouble for me. So when I sat here thinking, yes, I'm just going to go for it because we've got to be bold and we've got to be brave, do you know what? The attitudes in this room are so disheartening that I don't think I can do that today. Because no matter who sits at that top table for Norfolk and Suffolk, if it is the attitude from this room that is carried over, my residents are not going to be heard. And my residents deserve to know where the money that they are being forced to spend in their council tax is going to go.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Plant, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it's been a very good debate. And it's very interesting listening to a lot of what's gone on here today, especially about LGR from councillor Ring, where you had to talk about devolution. But the biggest thing we've got in front of us today is an empowered mayor for Norfolk and Suffolk would bring inward investment and inward business to this area that we are desperately needing over the next few years. We're not talking about in the next five years or 10 years. We're talking about 30 years if we can. Let's look forward to the future. £37 million per annum over 30 years for this area, split between revenue and capital, which means you can borrow against it, would triple that amount to £3.3 billion over that period of time. That is huge for this area. We've never had that kind. When councillor Borat suggested that we have the power of decision over building roads and building bridges and all that, we don't. We have to go to DFT, cap in hand, asking for the leftovers from what the mayoral authorities have left for as district and borough councils and county councils to ask for. So we're in a competition straight away for any infrastructure that we need in Norfolk. And I'm happy to say that over the last few years, we've had very much success in that respect. Norwich Western Link, Long Stratton Bypass, Third River Crossing at Great Yarmouth. These are millions and millions of pounds of monies that we've asked for but are the remnants of what went through a process that suggests that the mayors have first dabs without asking on that capital pot. We need that kind of investment in Norfolk. We've been in the back foot for so long. And it's really important that when we look at a mayor for Norfolk and Suffolk, we realise the impetus that that position has within central government of getting the... Well, I just read some of the things they say on here. We support a broad scope of thematic areas aligned with mayoral powers, including transport and local infrastructure. Skills and employment support housing and strategic planning, economic development and regeneration, environment and climate change, health and public service reform and public safety. Norfolk and Suffolk are developing a suite of funding pot options aligned to local growth plans and the framework themes outlined in the English Devolution and Community Empowerment Bill. That is something that we can't do as a county council. We will not be in that room talking about those things. We will be on the periphery, asking for the handouts. And I think we need, I mean, I was involved in the 2016, trying to get this done. If we'd have taken it in 2016, we'd have...
Councillor, could you sum up, please?
Thank you. We'd have spent £100 million by now. And that is where I'm coming from. We need the investment that we're short of in Norfolk. And yes, I will go to my constituents. And I will say to them that this is something that we need to do in order for you to have a better life.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Colwell, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Norfolk, like other counties across our country, are struggling at the moment. And we look at the conservative austerity that we've had for over the last decade. We look at Brexit, which was an absolute disaster that's impacting every single resident. You laugh, but it is. It's affecting every single resident. So I see that we as a council have no choice today but to be bold, but to be positive, to look at devolution as an opportunity for our residents. The subsequent cost of living crisis that those two things, conservative austerity and Brexit, of course, plus Covid added on, people are desperate. They are looking for something new, something to allow them to get change. And all we ever get told is that there isn't enough money in the pot. We then see cuts to social services, cuts to adult social services. And the things that our residents want don't actually happen. So let's grab devolution. Let's allow our transport and local infrastructure. Let's finally push for the dueling, the full dueling of the A47. Let's finally look at the skills. Let's look at youth unemployment in our county and use devolution to enable our young to actually get good quality skills and good quality Norfolk jobs. Let's look at the housing opportunities that devolution could bring. Let's build houses for young people, people that want to get on the housing ladder. Environment and climate, let's use any new money that we can get from central government to help communities like Hemsby, like West Norfolk that's suffering. Let's look at local nature recovery and allow things that our residents tell us that they want to happen. Finally, let's preserve our chalk streams and make sure that we get money from central government. Let's make our residents realise why devolution will work for them. I fully support this. Let's all get behind it. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. It's councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Lots of good debates in here today. I did vote in 2016, as councillor Long said. And councillor Plant spent lots of time as leader of the council then saying the proposing devolution. But in Great Yarmouth, as you know, we voted against it. And I was one of those who voted against it. And I realised that it was the wrong decision to make then, having since been leader of the council now for now my seventh year as leader. And now actually how we've had to fight to get the funding that we've got in to Great Yarmouth. And we've been successful. But I know lots of places, Kings Lynn, I know struggled to get some funding in, Brian in your area. And today, we've got a choice here today, a choice that we must take, I believe. Because if we don't take this today, Norfolk will be left behind again for another 10 years. Yes, it may not be a perfect deal, but it's the start of a deal. And we need to, the government's policy is growth, economic growth. And this is a great chance here for us, of course, in Norfolk today, to deliver for our residents, not just in Norfolk but Suffolk as well as we join with them. So I will be fully supporting this today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Fisher, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it's been an interesting debate today. And I'm pleased the debate has been delayed so I could make it because the previous dates clashed with my absence. I've been in local politics, as many people realise, a number of years. And I think reference has been made to the fact that devolution comes around every now and again. And unfortunately, similar to what councillor Smith just identified, in the past Norfolk has missed out that opportunity. And I think today, we have the opportunity to move forward, to move Norfolk forward. And if we don't, our residents will not thank us for this delayed decision. Unfortunately, the Norfolk dinosaurs stopped in the past what should have been progress. And there's been the odd comment, I think, from dinosaur today, he doesn't want to move forward. Norfolk has to move forward. Otherwise, the likes of Liverpool, whose mayor yesterday came forward with his blueprint for economic development in Liverpool, we need to be in that same circle. We need to be sitting at that same table and we need to be representing our residents with Suffolk. Suffolk have taken that decision. And I suspect if we go against this decision today, Suffolk will move forward independently to their benefit and to our detriment. So I urge everybody to get behind this today, one and for all, and move Norfolk forward and take that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I believe that everyone has indicated they wish to speak, has the opportunity to do so. Is there anyone else wishes to speak on this motion? In that case, the second has reserved his right to reply to the end. So I call on councillor Jimmison to second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, chair. So I want to focus on the financial aspects and what that will enable a democratically elected mayor to do. But I would just ask those dissenters in the room to look at the places who have already got a mayoral deal. There is no buyer's remorse, no rush to hand back powers or the funding. And as you know, this devolution deal comes with an investment fund of 37.4 million a year for 30 years. That equates to a total fund of 1.122 billion pounds. Now, it's by no means perfect, but there is much to like. The investment fund has a 50-50 revenue capital split. And we have complete discretion on how it's used, which is pretty much unheard of for Treasury. Normally, you get the sort of ring fencing that we saw recently attached to the Pride in Place funding for Great Yarmouth, for Thetford, Norwich and Kings Lynn. The government has prescribed where that can be spent, which means nothing for large parts of Norwich, but certainly nothing for the rest of Norfolk. And they've dictated the types of projects that funding can be spent on and will sign off on the plans. It's micromanagement by government and that won't happen. By contrast, the investment fund is ours to design and invest on our local priorities. Now, of course, the investment fund won't deliver the range of projects that we want to see by itself. We're ambitious to see projects to boost skills, help businesses grow, improve our transport links, wider infrastructure. And of course, we've worked hard with district councils in order to get that list forward. So 37.4 million will not do that on its own. But the fund can be used to attract more funding from central government, from the private sector, as well as other public sector sources. And our ambition would be to turn that 37.4 million into more like 100 million a year. It'll turn 1.1 billion into two or even three billion. What are the sort of things that we want this fund to support? It's improvements to our transport infrastructure to tackle congestion, improved journey times, investment in public transport on our bus network, new training facilities, support for our high streets, programmes to help our businesses grow and initiatives to help young people back into work. And of course, the financial constraints that are faced by all councils and all authorities mean that this investment fund will not, without it, it'll be very difficult to do much. So it's a very stark choice. Do you want Norfolk and Suffolk to be at the front of the queue with priority funding or not? Funding to help grow our economy, create jobs and opportunities for our young people or not? And finally, I would just say that it must be clear to you by now that the government has been channeling other funding through MCCAs, well pointed out by councillor Eagle. The vast majority of funding has gone to mayoral authorities, whatever government is in charge. We turned down the deal in 2016. We've missed out on over 300 million funding. You gear that up with government, that's over a billion that Norfolk has missed out with. Those who opposed it then are the 1 billion pounds men. And don't do it again because voters will notice this time and they will not forgive you.
Thank you, councillor. And as the proposer of the motion, she wishes to exercise her right to reply. councillor Mason-Billig, please.
Thank you, chairman. Usually, this chamber, we treat each other with respect. I don't know that that's necessarily happened this morning from all speakers, which is a shame. And we've heard about devolution. What is the right type of devolution? We missed out in 2016 because we hesitated. But I think a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. And I think that's what this deal actually is. It's our turn. We don't want to take the scraps from the table. We want the seat at the table so that we have a share of the prize. And we will be respected and equal members of the Council of Nations and regions by having devolution. I know there's been a bit of a muddle between LGR and devolution this morning. You would expect me to be robust in my defence of the business case from this council and perhaps be critical of districts' business cases. I make no apology for that, but I most certainly do not disparage any district council staff. They are most needed, most necessary. And good frontline staff will always be welcome in the new unitaries as well. They don't need to fear about that. But I will criticise leaders of other councils if I don't agree with them. I reserve that right. We have to set up the MCCA ahead of the elections in 2026. That's the way it works. So we can't wait. We've got to go ahead and do that. And the government have mandated how that will happen. And the two county councils will get together, along with our sponsoring board, which has district council leader representation on it and which we've chosen to do to make sure that districts are fully represented. And they will help with the pipeline of projects that we hope to present to our new mayor. And we hope they will use our new investment fund to actually pay for those. So it's incumbent upon all of us to tell our public what devolution is and what the benefits are. And so that they understand. And when they start seeing those local projects being delivered, I think they will thank us for taking this money and this opportunity. They won't want us to walk away from a billion pounds of new investment. Actually, it could be a lot more than that, as you've heard from councillor Jamison. And just finally, the elections were postponed for one year by the government. And that is still the current situation, as far as I'm aware. It's not in my gift to give any guarantees about what will or won't happen. It's down to the government. So that's just a fact of life, I'm afraid. You know as much as I do now.
Councillor, please, don't interrupt. Give the councillor the opportunity to do that. Please continue. Councillor Borat, are you raising a point of order or a point of information?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, given the huge...
Could you tell us if it's point of order or point of information?
I'm requesting a recorded vote, Mr. Chairman, as I think this is the place we are. And I just want to say, given the huge constitutional implications, I think it would be helpful for the public to be able to see how people vote. I don't expect it to change the result.
Councillor Borat, the time to do that is after councillor Mason-Billig has responded.
I thought she had finished.
She hasn't finished. She was interrupted and I was asking that she was given the courtesy of being allowed to continue. I'll pick up your point after councillor Mason-Billig's finished. Thank you.
I do apologise. I meant no disrespect to the chairman.
Thank you, chairman. This is our opportunity. We've missed it before. Let's not miss it again. Let's take this opportunity. Let's be one of those areas that gets the funding in the future. I urge everyone in this chamber to vote, please, for the recommendation. And I can then take that forward to Cabinet this afternoon.
Right, thank you. So councillor Borat has asked for a recorded vote. Is that the wish of the chamber? I'd give a show of hands, please, for a recorded vote. We will have a recorded vote. Thank you. I think the, I say, the motion has been duly proposed, seconded and pretty robustly debated. So recorded vote has been agreed. And can we now have that up on the screens, please? Thank you.